Pledge of Allegiance, he's waiting in the back with a big beer. I was gonna have Rose tell her about she lost her dog. That's all the hard work she's done on us. You can do it either way.
All right, who did you want me to do?
Honest Wagner, he's been very active with the veterans and stuff.
Honest Wagner? All right. Okay, we're all set. Good evening and welcome to the June 13th, 2017, meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen. May I have a roll call, please?
President is Selectman Tropiano, Selectman Scasiati, Selectman Whiteside, Selectman Slaven, Selectman Tittlebaum, Town Administrator Derek Sullivan, Town Council Richard Bowen.
Need somebody to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Wagner, would you do it, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements. Selectman Tropiano?
Nothing.
Selectman Scasiati? Selectman Whiteside?
Yes, I have a couple, thank you. Many of our selectmen spend many hours on town business that we don't really often hear about, and one of our select people is very, what's the word, shy about boasting. So I'm going to read the two commendations that he got recently. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, on behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I am pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation in recognition of receiving the SERPED Commissioner of the Year Award for your dedication and commitment to the SERPED Commission and your region, this 24th day of May in the year 2017, signed by Governor Baker and Karen Polito, to Alan Slaven. And a SERPED, which stands for Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, the commission presented the Commissioner of the Year Award to Alan Slaven. A highly active member of the SERPED Commission, Alan Slaven also serves as a member of the Finance Committee, the MPO, the JTPG, and the RESC. In addition, Alan is a member of the Massachusetts Municipal Association Board of Directors for 2017, all of the while serving as a selectman for Wareham and a Board of Selectmen liaison to numerous other town boards and committees. The commission of SERPED gratefully acknowledges Alan's continuing dedication and commitment to the agency and the region, signed by Jonathan Henry and Jeffrey Walker. Thank you. It just, I think, really goes to show that other people are recognizing the kind of effort that Alan has put in on behalf of the Town of Wareham for the past, what, 12 years or something like that? You don't always have to agree with him, but we do consider him our foreign diplomat, our foreign diplomat, anything inside Wareham and outside Wareham.
Thank you, Alan, thank you. What else? Any guests?
I'm also.
What do you have?
Oh, yes, I do, excuse me. Last night, the school building committee met to make a decision about a recommendation that will be forwarded to the MSBA.
MSBA.
MSBA, for an OPM, for the group that would be making recommendations to the town through the school on the building of new elementary, replacing elementary, or renovating elementary. Those, this school will be having some press releases, and there were 21 citizens involved in that committee, and seven, I think, on the subcommittee, who did an extraordinary job of interviewing, well, there were 15 applicants responded to the RFP, and then they had it down to five finalists, and they interviewed all of the five finalists and had presentations. So the process has already begun several months ago, and there's already been an enormous amount of work done. I just wanted to let you know that so that when you do start reading about it, you'll understand even more what kind of work has been going into it. Thank you.
Okay. First off, we have an intern program at Bridgewater State University, we've been working on for four years now. We finally have some fruition. Our ITS manager, Matt Underhill, has a graduate school student in place as of now through the summer, and then come the fall, we have another student from Bridgewater State, we're coming right behind her and work for at least the fall and the spring semester. It's taken a while, but it should help the town quite a bit. The Historical Society has their Antiques Fair on July 4th over at Center Park. They will also have a car show this year, which will be over the Tremont Nail Facility, to start to use that facility as we promised we would do. Next, we have the Fourth Annual Onset Bay Blessing of the Fleet, Saturday, July 1st, 10:00 a.m. If you want to bring your boat through the actual parade, you can sign up at onsetbotf@gmail.com. Required information is captain's name, boat's name, and type of boat. There'll be prizes for crew and also vessels. Have any questions, get a hold of the harbor master as well. Next, never forget the Moving Wall, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, the Moving Wall is coming to Wareham August 17th to 21st. Anderson Track, Wareham Middle School, 4 Viking Drive, will be open to the public 24 hours a day. There'll be ceremonies August 17th, 18th, 19th, 7:00 p.m., August 20th noon, and 2:00 p.m. August 21st, 10:00 a.m. It's, I think, a half-size replica?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a pretty moving thing to see the real one. This other one here is, it takes your breath away, actually. Also, having to do with the Moving Wall, the Patriot Riders Mass Chapter 5, in conjunction with the Friends of the Wareham Veterans, Inc., invites you to join us in a beautiful ride around Cape Cod to raise awareness and funds to help bring the Moving Wall to Wareham. June 24th, staging at the Dudley L. Brown VFW 4 Gibbs Ballpark Road, ending with a barbecue at the VFW. The cost is $20 a rider, $10 a passenger, $10 for barbecue only, bring the family as well. This is a rain or shine event. Next, oh, they're really busy. Why Cook, pancake breakfast fundraiser, enjoy a delicious breakfast in the support of the Vietnam Moving Wall and other projects of the Wareham Veterans Council. June 17th, 8 o'clock in the morning to 12:00 in the afternoon, WF Brown VFW, onset again, sponsored by the American Legion Post 220, WL Brown VFW Post 2846, and Father Francis Grogan Knights of the Columbus Council 15280. Cost is $12, $8 for children under 10. That's all I got.
Okay, I've got a couple of things. First off, on Thursday, the 15th, at noon, in the Main Street branch of Eastern Bank, Kirk and Marilyn Whipple will be doing a piano concert. They did one last week, I understand, it was quite spectacular. This is Rose Berry's branch, she's right there, so I'm sure she'd like to see a lot of us show up on Thursday at noon to listen to some great music. Secondly, I wasn't here last week, but the previous week, we had the final public input session on the Tremont Nail Factory feasibility study with Mass Development. I was very pleased that a lot of people showed up and spoke about that. It seems that there's a, surprisingly, there's a fairly common vision for what should take place at the site. We're right now working on the very last draft of it so that the final package can be presented. Once that's done, we're hopeful that Mass Development will see it and come through with some additional money for the site assessment and cleanup of the environmental issues. Moving on, we have citizen comments. How many people are here tonight to speak about the proposed 40B project? If you'll raise your hands. We've got quite a few. You want a moment of silence? Why don't you do that, then?
Timmy White, Timmy Knight also.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Turning Point?
Here, can you hold the cameras till the end?
Excuse me?
You hold it till the end?
You want me to hold that till the end so you can get out?
Yeah, 'cause...
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yep. That's fine. Then you won't have to hang around. Do the moment of silence.
There were two individuals who have served the town for a long time. One of them, I can't remember her first name, and I apologize, McDonald, who worked with Turning Point, passed last week, and then Tim...
Timmy Knight just passed away yesterday, I believe.
Okay, and he was...
Timmy did?
He was involved in different things with the town.
Yep.
From the St. Jake's family as well.
Right.
Involved with the AA Group, et cetera. It was a very disappointing thing.
Did pass, I was unaware of that.
He had stage four cancer. Last for a moment of silence for everybody, please.
Okay. I'm gonna ask the indulgence of the people who are here for the 40B. We have it on the agenda as an item. We certainly want to hear from you first. Selectman Tropiano has an issue with the property, and he has to accuse himself, as he did last week, from any discussion. I know it's gonna be a lengthy piece of business for us, both in our own discussion about it and as well as hearing from you, so what I'd like to do is sort of run through the rest of the agenda fairly quickly, and then that will allow him to get out of here so that he doesn't have to wait outside in the hall for the longest part of the meeting, if everybody's okay with that. Good, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the board about something other than the 40B project? Mr. Walton?
I bet you I know what he's gonna talk about.
Pink and green, great.
Yad sales, nailed to trees, and telephone poles.
Yes, yes, now, let's, I'm only here to groan a bit, and then I'll get out of here so people can spend some time here. I just would like, we're now into June, summer has started with the past couple days, anyway, and the signs are gonna start coming up, and we have to find someone with authority to go and notify these people that they're going to be fined. Either that or fine them, so that the rumor goes around that they've been fined. These signs were taken today, I almost got killed on Route 6 running around, they were weekend signs, today is Tuesday, they shouldn't be there, they shouldn't be there. I spent an hour taking one off this pack of a town sign glued to the side, I had to buy some stuff to put on there to scrape it off. This is crazy, and if you don't go and find these people, they will do it. And I didn't do it, I left it purposely, because there's a gentleman and his wife were out of town, and I knew they would love it, and granted, it came down as soon as they saw it. It was nailed to one of our small, young trees. Take a sign and nail it to a tree in town property. This is crazy, and until we find someone with authority to go and find these people, and really, really bend it, it isn't going to make any difference. Part of this also, and I'll go sit down, already the real estate signs are starting to pop up on the corner of the road with an arrow up the hill, somewhere down there there's a house for sale, somewhere up there, they're gonna start showing up all over the place. If you people want to allow it to happen, okay, I'll stop complaining, and I'll get the ones I can get, and if I don't get run over and don't break my back, so I can still play a little golf. I'd appreciate it if something was done, if not, man, that's life. But that's enough, I don't want to take up any more time. But this is crazy, these should have been taken down. Two of them were at the end of Swiss Beach Road, and guess where the garage sale was? On Swiss Beach Road! They're telling me the people that live there couldn't take their own signs down, coming in and out of the road? This is crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Somebody else in the back?
Oh, yes, Mrs. Slaven, such a pleasure, come up, please.
Thank you.
Don't have any trash with you, do you?
No trash. Sandy Slaven, just to repeat, you put a nail into a tree, you're gonna kill that tree. Removing the sign is one thing, the nail has to come up too, but I really came up for another issue. I saw an article which plants were being, had been stolen. I was gonna talk about something that happened at the Agawam Cemetery. Someone put out a beautiful hanging basket, it was gone the next morning. This has to stop. The plants don't cost that amount of money. I was watering Zoli Square yesterday, our plants have been taken from there, too. Please, stop it.
You mentioned that, taking them right off the street.
Thanks. That's pretty mild. Okay, let's move on to appointments, reappointments and interviews. Would we like to do the Council on Aging Board of Directors first, because I noticed there's quite a few of the directors here? Take that one out of order. What do we have?
Okay. First one I have is Melissa Plordi.
Plord.
Plord?
Plord.
Yes.
No D.
Plord.
Accent grave.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tell us about your interest in the Council on Aging and why you want to serve, please.
I moved to Wareham last year. I have been working in senior services for about 15 years, I'm a social worker, and I care about what happens to the seniors in this town. I work for a hospice agency in town as well, so I care and I want to make a difference to the seniors.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Move the appointment.
Yeah, let Alan make the motions, because he's got those paperwork.
Are you ready for me? Okay, we have, from Melissa Purdy, 4 Fieldstone Circle, West Wareham, Mass, the undersigned Selectman of Wareham, have this day appointed you as a member of the Council of Aging Board of Directors, to a term expired no later than June 30th, 2021.
Second, can you please pronounce your last name?
Yes, it's Plord.
Yeah, it's Plord.
It's a French name.
Close enough.
No accent grave, no E, huh?
I guess it's not there.
It's supposed to be.
No grave, no E, no nothing. Okay.
You'll be able to pick up your paperwork?
We haven't finished yet.
Yeah, we're just letting you, you'll be able to pick up your paperwork, just so you know at the Selectman's office. You're also gonna have to do a, the ethics test down the line, anyway, you have to have that done.
Okay.
Peter will explain it to you. He failed a couple of times, then he got through eventually.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint by Clerk Slaven, seconded by Selectman Whiteside, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 500. Again, the paperwork could be ready tomorrow. Thanks for stepping up and serving, it's appreciated.
Thank you for your service.
Any other rookies, or are they all reappointments?
They're reappointments, I believe, here.
Is that it for the Council on Aging?
No, I think there's something else here.
I don't know, it isn't. Is that it, Peter?
I don't see any other appointment sheets in the file, so that must have been it.
I guess that's the only one.
Is everything else a reappointment?
Yes.
So there's nobody here to speak to the board, a brand-new potential person, is there?
There's nothing in the folder for anyone.
That's not in the folder. Do you have one appointment to be made?
One appointment for reappointments.
Well, if we don't have the, if we don't have the paperwork in there, then...
Get them next week.
Then we'll get it next week.
Oh, it's in there, it's a single, Peter.
Thanks. The reason I'm asking is we can do this after, we can do this at the end of the meeting and not hold everybody up.
Right.
The rest of, yeah, let's just clear this aside for now. We'll come back to everything except the one we just did. And I got these circled for what we have to do. We'll get the license and permit out of the way.
We can do the... Oh, okay.
Okay.
I don't want to miss that.
Next, I have a request from the Buzzers Playhouse Productions. The above-named nonprofit organizations hereby granted a special license for the sale of wine and malt beverages to be drunk on the premises under Chapter 138, Section 14 Liquor Control Act. They are looking for a permit for June 17th from 8:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. to be held at 3065 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, for a comedy show. This license is granted in conformity to statutes and ordinances related thereto, expires on June 18th, 2017, unless sooner suspended or revoked.
Want a second for discussion?
Yeah, just quickly. Have the egress issues been ironed out yet with, with the Building Inspector, Building Department? Not sure that they have.
That I do not know. Mr. Sullivan?
Egress is, you can't...
For the Buzzers Play Productions facility at the old Cranberry Factory.
Having an egress issue, you have proper exits and so on at the time.
Yeah, I know Mr. Aquino's working with them, so if you want to approve it, subject to him signing off, that's fine. I thought...
You want to add that condition to the motion in the second, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I thought it had been resolved, but I'd rather we be cautious.
Yeah, rather err on the side of caution here, thank you.
Checking.
Yep, that's good. Okay, all, we have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Abstained, 410. Subject to clearance from Inspection Services. Let's see, moving on to town business.
Chair.
We have the proposed donation of a chair from Eastern Bank. Would the people involved in that, please come up? Good evening.
Bob, before we, before we stop, I'd like to put a special recognition out to Rose Berry for all the work she's done for the Moving Wall, and it's a difficult time, she just recently lost her best friend. Sorry about that.
Thanks. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's an honor.
Pull it right up, the air conditioning gets a little tough in here tonight.
Can you hear me now?
Is it green?
Is the light on?
Yeah.
Tap it, give it a whack.
Grab the next one over.
Yeah.
There you go. No?
No.
Just bellow into the thing.
Bellow?
Move Roses over.
Is this one working?
No.
It's still not working that way.
You might want to do all three.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello!
Let me try doing it, I'll speak louder.
Speak louder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's an honor and a privilege to be here amongst members of the VFW, the American Legion, and other veterans organizations, the council, members of the Friends, and especially Rose Berry, who, without her help and creativity, this chair wouldn't be here. I'd also like to thank the Selectmen and all the businesses, the people in the town, for their support of the various fundraising activities that are taking place. When I hit the wall on Plan A to get a chair, I went to Eastern Bank, Rose Berry, and we sat, and she crafted an idea and a plan, so Eastern Bank donated a surplus chair, donated stanchions downstairs, Eastern Bank paid for the plaque, and my Vietnam veteran friend back here, Tom Cookinham, got us the flag, and we had it placed on the chair. And again, I can't say enough about Rose. Eastern Bank's come up with thousands of dollars over the years for all the different organizations in town, and she's always supported, supported us, but I'd like to defer to Rose and let her say a few words, and I'm gonna take the plaque and ask her to read the plaque.
Thank you all very much. It's a great honor and a pleasure to be in this town. I have grown so fond of Wareham. Most of you don't know that I don't live here, although I feel like I do, and it's just wonderful to be a part of this town, and I'm just grateful to all of you. And again, it is an honor and a pleasure, and I'll take this time to read this. "We are ever mindful that enduring peace comes by great sacrifice. We must never forget that our freedoms others endured, pain, suffering, deprivation, and imprisonment. This empty chair memorializes and causes us to remember those military who have served our nation during wartime and remain missing. God bless you and your families."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Rose, thank everybody who helped with this. This is outstanding.
I do want to take a moment to thank Bob Hylitis, who has been instrumental in this, so thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
I'll make a motion to accept the gift from the group.
Second.
Motion to accept the donation from Clerk Slaven, seconded by Selectman Whiteside, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 500. Thank you again for your generous gift.
Next up is Mr. Fitman here, the MMA representative for the veterans. Hey, Bob?
Mr. Fitman?
Is Mr. Fitman here? Thank you.
I'll get two for the price of one.
Two for the price of one.
We are here to thank Joseph, I mean Patrick Buehl for his service as an associate member representing Maritime Academy on the Veterans Council. He's graduating this week, and Joseph Fitman is going to take his place on the council going forward. I'll let Patrick say a few words.
Thank you, members of the committee. I, when I was approached by the Commandant of Cadets last summer, when I was out on my commercial ship down in the Gulf of Mexico, offering me the opportunity to help out the Town of Wareham Veterans Council, I jumped at the opportunity, because at the academy, both myself and Mr. Fitman are members of the Regimental Honor Guard, so it's our honor and privilege to help out any sort of Veterans Council, any sort of military thing that we can do. And this past year, serving as an associate member, I was able to provide input from perhaps a younger generation, and it was, it was my honor to assist, and I'm introducing Mr. Fitman. Mr. Fitman is a third-class cadet at the academy, entering into his junior year. He's studying emergency management, and he's gonna do a great job filling my place on the council. I am graduating on Saturday, Marine Transportation, and I just want to thank Chairman White and all the members of the committee for their assistance with helping me help them. It's been a pleasure. So, Mr. Fitman, if you want to say a few words.
Thank you for the introduction, Mr. Buehl. My name is Joseph Fitman, I'm a third-class cadet at Mass Maritime, and I have similar reactions to Mr. Buehl when I was approached by the Commandant of Cadets, and then I later spoke to Mr. Buehl about the opportunity. I was more than, more than happy to serve, and I was extremely grateful and honored that he had recommended me as his replacement. And like he said, we are the Honor Guard, and it's something I take pride in being able to do, and being able to help those that have served us, so I'm very grateful and humbled at the opportunity that both my academy and Mr. Buehl saw that I was fit to serve, and I can't wait for the next couple of years when I can help this community out and give back to our veterans. Thank you very much.
Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Yes.
He need to get a haircut like his though.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, you may.
What are your post-graduation plans, because I know that you're employed?
Sure, so a couple, a couple of weeks ago, I sat and I passed my United States Coast Guard Third Mate Unlimited exams. My primary objective, I'm applying to join the Commission NOAA Officer Corps, so my application is gonna be in on July 1st, and I'll hear back from them whether or not I'll get accepted or not. If I don't, I'll try and get a job, Third Mate, on an oil tank or a container ship.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you both for your assistance. Okay, next up, discussion with Don't Trash Wareham regarding lottery ticket bill and vote to authorize chairman to send letter of support. Good evening.
Fun trip to Boston today?
Long day. I'm here, I'm here to ask you to consider and vote on a House bill, which I sent a copy, and I don't know if you all got a copy of it, it's House Bill 174, and it is a bill that will ask for the lottery commission to make a second chance lottery pool that will hopefully decrease the amount of the scratch lottery tickets that we all pick up with the nip bottles that we all pick up so often. So I, I don't have the full one in front of me right now, but I think you all have it, and so I would ask that you take a vote and for, to write a letter to the, to the committee that's reviewing it.
Second.
Whoa, a motion to authorize a letter from Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Whiteside, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Selectman Slaven?
While you were at one session today at the State House, I was doing other things, so I was able to get to Lieutenant Governor today, and I did ask for several pieces. One, of course, is the miniatures bill that's up there for the bottle. I also mentioned the plastic bags, and also the issue about the lottery tickets itself. So we're gonna be getting support from the Governor and Lieutenant Governor as well.
Thank you for that. Just a brief report on my day today in Boston. I was there for the hearing for House Bill 3528, which is the miniature or nip bottle five-cent deposit. There were many speakers, but there were... There were many speakers, but there was no one opposed to the bill. So it was a good day for that and we thank you for having sent the letter prior to that hearing. So I think that's, it sounds pretty good and Maine just passed theirs. So I think we may be lucky with the nip bill. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you for all your hard work, Nora. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Nora.
Do you have a question? Yes, please. Mrs. Vicki is another one of the people who spends an inordinate amount of time on behalf of the town. She is behind the scenes for the library, the Friends of the Library, Don't Trash Wareham, and follows up on all of the potential bills that might affect trash, which is really obvious. But she's also really involved in this community. She received a bouquet last year from this board.
I knew a bouquet.
Yeah, it was a wonderful bouquet. It had nip bottles in it.
Full ones, by the way.
Yeah, full ones. But I just want everyone to know how much time you spend behind the scenes as well as an unpaid volunteer.
Well, let me echo Rose. I love this town and I love the people in the town and I think that we are constantly improving and it's because of all the work that everybody does. Don't Trash Wareham is a team of 400-plus volunteers. So that's, it's not just me doing that work. So thank you very much.
Thank you as well.
Ready?
Yep. Okay, now we're here for the main event. I'm going to give Selectman Tropiano a chance to bid adieu to us for the evening. Everything else we can handle ourselves.
The record should show.
It'll be noted in the minutes.
Have a good night, Patrick.
Good night. Okay, before we start listening to your comments on this, there are a few things I'd just like to explain about the 40B process, who has the permitting authority, and how these things can or cannot go. The Board of Selectmen tonight is not acting to issue a permit to anyone. We don't have that authority. The only board in town that can issue a 40B permit or denial of a permit is the Zoning Board of Appeals. And that is only after a public hearing in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The reason the selectmen are going over this tonight is that we have the right under state law to submit commentary to the Department of Housing and Community Development. In many instances, the developer seeks grants from the Department of Housing and Community Development in order to defray the cost of building these housing projects. And so that's the role of the Board of Selectmen tonight. That's why it's on our agenda under town business is to go over what the board would like to see in a letter that I will send to the Department of Housing and Community Development. Now, I'm going to do something a little bit unusual here. Last week, I sent out an initial list of points to the board that I thought we might like to discuss. And I solicited from the board their own comments, if they had any, of issues that they would like to discuss in relation to this pending application for the 40B permit. And among them are the size of the project, and these are mostly bullet points, so please excuse the not-quite King's English. Size of project, bad history in town with large projects of this nature. Build out of 174 units within two or three years is too much too fast. Despite resident preferences, no guarantees, units won't be filled by non-residents. Workforce housing component is not a majority of the units. And for those who don't know, what the developer is presently proposing is that 40 of these units be what's called small affordable, small A, minimally subsidized, with income levels that are above the fully subsidized 40B amount, as reflected often with Section 8 vouchers and things like that. So that's called workforce housing. Right now, the developer is proposing 40% workforce, 60% pure affordable. Let's see. Significant financial impact of several hundred new residents upon schools, police, emergency medical services, sewer capacity in the fire districts. A location too near congested intersection. Housing in Wareham is already affordable. Although we have not met our 10% affordable quota under state law, we are much closer to it than most other local municipalities. But even if we meet the 10% affordable housing quota within the town, we may still be required to accept additional 40B projects due to the regional percentage numbers. The state can cite to a regional lead to override your achieving the 10% quota. Jobs need to be available before providing housing. Otherwise, any residents will find it difficult to break the cycle of poverty. Many in town already face significant socioeconomic challenges and we are ill-equipped to receive more people with these issues. And lastly, oftentimes when these projects are built, they attract people seeking to escape the cities. They come to the town seeking the same level of services that they had in the cities and they find that we just don't provide them here. And so that's sort of a laundry list of things that I've come up with that I'm going to ask the board to vote on each item for inclusion in the letter that I eventually send to the Department of Housing and Community Development. And I think from the tone of most of these, you can sort of divine where I stand on this. I won't speak for the rest of the board. That's when they have the opportunity to weigh in. With that said, I'm sure there are people who would like to speak to the board. The lady behind you raised her hand, so she was quick on the draw.
Good evening, Chair. Thank you.
Give us your name and your precinct, please. Thanks.
And can you pull that? I think it's working now. Yeah.
My full name's Lucille Dodson. I've been a year-round resident for 18 years and prior to that, part-time resident since 1981. And what I drew up here is basically an outline. I've been on social media about this issue. This is not about me. This is about our community. I just want that right up front. And what I proposed here is I collected my thoughts, but also other thoughts against this project. And this is the outline. And again, it's actually some very similar of what your list is. But if you'd just give me the moment. First of all, it's the location. It drastically changes the area to the streets, the neighbors, and the neighborhoods that live near where this location is. Route 6 and Cranberry Highway are already highly congested and very dangerous. Many accidents have happened there, including mine. I was stopped waiting to turn onto Cranberry Highway and I got rear-ended, which I suffered a bad concussion from, which I still have lingering effects from. With an addition, you know, conservatively, we know this is going to be at least 400 or 500 people, if this is approved, into such a, all of a sudden, boom, just smacked right into that area. It would increase both congestion and accidents is waiting to happen. If approved this way, number one, it would impact on the strain of our sewer treatment plant. A, our rates have already increased starting this year. B, the neighbors that lived near the sewer plant last year complained at the horrible odors coming from the sewer treatment plant, causing them headaches and forcing many to stay inside. Number two, it would impact the Onset Fire District and all those that pay taxes to them. We just voted for a new and larger fire station, but on a smaller scale, because of the portion of our tax bills that go to the Onset Fire District, we will now be going up and we just can't afford anymore. We can't afford, if this should pass, we know that that's, they're going to need more and more and more. Number three, it would impact our schools, causing overcrowding with an estimated additional 248 children, which then will be a future tax burden with building bigger schools. Number four, Wareham does not do well with these projects of this size. Think of Brandy Hill, where they now have a 24-hour guard there because of all the criminal activity that has gone on there. Also, Woods of Wareham, another trouble spot, just to name those two. Number five, most people living here now live on fixed incomes or paycheck to paycheck and cannot afford increases in their tax bills with future needs for increased police or fire personnel salaries, along with their pensions and health insurance benefits, and additional water bills, you name it. It just keeps, the list goes on and on. Number six, 60% of affordable based on income requirement opens the door to Section 8 housing when apartments are left with vacancies, housing vouchers. Number seven, the town has worked so hard, and I thank you all for it, actually, that let's not be a welcome community to trouble. We've been trying for years and it's been successful. I have witnessed so many drug transactions when I first moved here 18 years ago. My neighborhood has cleaned up so much and I am so grateful and I'm in disbelief because I actually thought I would never see the day when I could actually enjoy my backyard. And I am not going to see our neighborhood and our town go backwards. Let's see. Number eight, a citizen has done research on these developers and has found out they have changed their name three times in 15 years due to negligent lawsuits. An article quoting a builder inspector, Ford Island, saying he would not allow them to build a doghouse. They have been allegedly paid off an inspector to say gas lines were good when they had holes and that same inspector had been fired. Number nine, there's a list that we already have of affordable housing of these kind of projects. Brandy Hill has 132 units. Woods at Wareham, 100 units. The Village on Main Street, 49 units. Cremeset Woods, 92 units. Union Pond, 49 units. Cranberry Manor, 24 units. Depot Crossing, 32 units. Number 10, this would open the door for people from other communities, such as New Bedford and Brockton, searching for housing. We all know there's good people everywhere, but we also know there's a lot of trouble in these spots. And Wareham, and we do not deserve this. We have worked so hard to be good-paying citizens and Wareham, as you know, many years has had such a bad rep. Don't we want that to be changed? Don't we want to be considered, you know, a town of quality and not troubled? Number seven, what about instead of even allowing this, you know, 55 are senior housing which would create less taxes on our resources, our schools, our police, and et cetera? We all know that senior housing does fall under 40B. So if we need to have that in town, let's propose to make it a minimum, you know, not the size that they're talking about even, but change it to senior housing, where then we won't have to have, you know, all these other hard resources on this town. I know myself, I'm a single woman. I've worked really hard. I own my own home. I'm the only one that pays that mortgage, nobody else. And I'm up to here, as it is, treading water. And my feeling is, and like a lot of town people here on fixed income, is that if our taxes and our sewer and this and that, whatever keeps going up, then we're going to be having to either walk away from our houses, which will leave them vacant, and then who will be paying on those taxes in foreclosure? And then I'll be knocking on some door looking for affordable housing. So I ask you, please, 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 just really think hard on this because even the structure there in that area, it doesn't even fit. It doesn't even scenically fit. Wareham is a beach community. You're talking about, you know, the Tremont Nail and trying to bring more tourists here. We don't need a project like this. And I thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Of what?
Of what she read.
Actually, do you happen to have a copy of what you just read to us?
Right here.
Okay.
Make a copy.
Come on back.
You can make a copy.
Yep.
It's messy.
Derek, will you copy it? That's okay.
You can make a copy here.
It was actually more articulate than my bullet points.
It wasn't bad.
And more passionate.
Is there anybody else who can add to that? I guess maybe that's what I'd like to say.
I can add one thing.
Certainly.
I don't know what precinct I'm in.
Okay. Wait one second.
It's okay.
Yes, please identify yourself and add your point.
My name is Debbie Ito. I live on Monac Road, right off of, head of the bay, right up the street from the corner where this is supposed to be developed. I can't add anything to that. That was wonderful, except for one thing, and my concern would be the infrastructure because the neighborhood was built as a vacation neighborhood. So all the pipes, all the streets, everything was built with that in mind, not with the amount of the population that will increase if this is built. And I would be really concerned with any effects on not just water supply, but delivery and electricity, all that stuff that is not, again, built, it was just built for vacation. And as many of the vacation homes that have now have year-round residents in them, you know, that's a minor adjustment. But to add hundreds of people to that and make that demand on the, to me, would be a supply that would be at a minimum because of what the whole neighborhood was prepared for.
Yep.
Would cause all of us, between the taxes and the potential issues that could come up with all the resources and the infrastructure itself, be very, very concerning. And like she said as well, the stress of all the demand on the rest of the town as far as the schools and the services and everything would be so much more and the taxes would go up and it would be a life-changing decision for a lot of people.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want a copy of what she wrote, too?
She just said the one thing. I wrote it down. Mr. Alvin.
My name is Peter Acavati. I live at 40 Weona Road. My family has lived in that house for approximately 60 years. Route 6 Cranberry Highway cannot take any more traffic. In the summertime, it takes 20 minutes to get from Route 25 to Red Brook Road. It's ridiculous. It looks like Las Vegas. This isn't, this is a small community. It doesn't need all of the commercial buildings that are on here. Waterways, the traffic that that alone causes, and you want to put 174 units with approximately 600 people?
Well, I'm not so sure we want to, but...
I understand that. My question is also, something this large, and it is a very large project, should have had more advertisement as to meetings, hearings, I mean, today.
That will come forward with the zoning board of appeals process.
When, last week, the courier came out and announced this. Nobody had ever heard of this. No one in my neighborhood, and I only live on Weona Road, that's only seven streets up. Nobody knew about this, that this was going on. And the article ended by saying, sometime next week, we'll have a hearing. And nobody knew when the hearing was going to be. It's too big of a project to just let it get blown right through the system.
I don't think that a project of this size anywhere is going to get through one hearing in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I would be astonished if that were to happen.
I understand that also, but what I do understand is what I see. What I see is I saw a piece of property that had a for-sale sign for four years. Nothing. Nothing. All of a sudden, the for-sale sign is gone. You see people out there with survey and they're doing plot plans. There's a motel that supposedly part of the deal is going to be torn down and they took the sign off of the motel. Already. That indicates to me that they're assured they're going to have this project. They took, right by it, the sign that said it was a motel is wiped clean. The sign's still there, but it's painted. So that makes me feel like we don't have a choice. We're going to be force-fed this.
Just a quick comment. Under our signed bylaw, since I wrote most of it, when a business becomes inactive, they have to either remove or cover the sign up.
It's not inactive. There's people living there.
I'm just saying, if they've covered it up, that's what they're supposed to do. My understanding is that that's going to be a retail type operation when they get done, if it ever gets approved.
Yes.
Normally, if that's...
But it's still a business. It's still a functioning business.
I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying is normally if a business is going to shut down, they cover up the sign. Just so you know. Has nothing to do with that.
Can I ask why, Patrick?
We can't. It's a legal matter that he has with the owners of the property.
And that's really all he's told us as well, so...
Thank you for your time.
It's out of our hands. Thank you.
Okay, in the back with the white sleeve.
Hello, my name is Michelle Hurd. I don't know what district I'm in. Thank you for hearing me. And I agree with Lucille and Peter, everything that they say. I'm a... I'm a local Realtor and I just want you to know that every day we get phone calls, people looking for Section 8. They're not looking for regular apartments, they're looking for Section 8. They want two, they want three bedrooms, or two. And you say, how many in your family? Well, we've got four, four children and two dogs, or whatever. We've got a lot of people looking for Section 8 and they're not from Wareham. They're coming from their surrounding areas, they're coming from Boston, and they want to come down here because they can get, um, they can get apartments for $1,800 a month for two bedrooms. Now who, who's not on Section 8, who can afford that down here? I used to be a Realtor in Providence, in the east side of Providence, and people were paying that for two bedrooms. Down here, they're paying $1,800 for two bedrooms? It just is, it, it boggles my mind. But every single day, we get multiple calls for Section 8. That's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you.
I do agree with Lucille. Thank you.
Somebody else have their hand up? I'll get to you next.
My name is Monica Montgomery and I live in Precinct 4. And I don't need to reiterate everyone else's points about size and density in schools, but I would like to make a point that I feel that this project is basically a retaliation from a disgruntled motel owner whose business plan just got upended with the restrictions on how long people can stay. That was definitely one of these long-time people living in those rooms for, for many, many years. And while this may be the first project, I suspect it will not be the last. Many of these motels are sitting on fairly substantial pieces of property. And this is our commercial strip zone. This is not the place for a 174-unit housing project. This isn't housing, it's warehousing. I did not see any sort of amenities with this project. Was there a swimming pool? Is there a cabana? Is there an exercise room? All I saw was, well, 174, one, two, three bedrooms, blah, blah, blah. I didn't see anything that would be appealing to, to, to anyone. This is, this is not, this is not Wareham. This is an angry business owner and we need to, we need to look out for ourselves and make sure this is not just the first of a long line of inappropriate projects.
Thank you.
My name is Archie Box. My wife and I moved here three years ago and we liked the place, but it's really going to impact us because we live right off Red Brook Road. And my concern is the fact is that before we moved here, my wife worked as a state manager for low-income housing. She managed 27 properties in the southern part of the state of Indiana. And I can tell you from experiences that even though it's 60% low-income housing, now that 60%, you may only get 15 or 20% of people that are going to be responsible. As we wound up, we had problems with drugs, they had drug, drug labs, they had, actually had a couple places that were running porn shows out of the, out of houses and constant calls on the cops, there were constant fires. And my understanding is, I haven't been here that long, is, but the police department and the fire department are stressed now for the areas that they have to cover. And that's basically what I'm concerned about is that. And just, and the one thing I have not heard anything at all about is, how is this going to affect the widening of, of 6? Is that going to be tied into that, or how's that going to affect Red, Red Brook Road, or?
I, I don't know what their plan is to work with the state on that.
I heard, quote unquote, is from the split by the Conoco Station all the way to Red Brook Road, is the next three years is those are going to be widened?
Correct.
It is.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, you know, has he made, taking this into consideration when, put that in there plus all the other traffic, and it's going to be a bad, bad way to get in and out now, it's going to get even worse.
A copy of the letter will be sent to Mass Highway District 5 as well.
Thank you.
Are there going to be, 6 going to be widened to make more lanes?
There's going to be five, uh, be two lanes on each side, the center lane and the center divider.
With Jersey Garys?
No.
No.
It's going to, it's going to be a four-inch raised berm.
One or two roundabouts, and it's from the Conoco Station where they come together, up by the mobile station, all the way down to Red Brook. So my understanding was it's going to be a three-year project.
Actually, it's 2018 and 2019, sir.
Two years?
Two-year project.
Yep.
It's 18 million dollars, it's approximately 18, 19 million dollars.
Uh...
I'm dividing it in two years and I wanted it in four, sir.
We've been waiting 20 years for this.
Yeah.
This has been on the books a long time.
Uh, gentleman with the, the B. Is that you? Is that a B on there? On your hat?
Sir.
Okay. I'll get to the other gentleman with the hat afterwards.
How you doing? My name's Richard Moore. I'm a family member to a, a butter.
Okay.
Nineteen seventy-eight.
Okay, yes, let's just have one person, Michael? Michael? Michael, no interviewing in the crowd. If you're going to talk to people, do it outside, please.
Go outside.
Go ahead, sir.
In nineteen seventy-eight, after I came home from overseas, my parents bought that piece of land in the back. That was five acres of beautiful land, and we will greatly be impacted if this thing goes up.
Yep.
We're already impacted by the homeless people that are living on the reservoir right now, that nobody seems to do anything about. And we have pictures and films of people out there just living there. And you guys can't even stop that.
Yep.
And who knows about the traffic situation? Now that boat building place, are those buildings part of the historical society? And are they going to be torn down?
That I do not know. Right now, that is not part of the motel property. It would be a separate acquisition that owner would have to sell.
Right. Okay. Because he didn't sell when they wanted to build a grocery store there years, a few years ago now.
Yeah, I don't know what the intent of that, that property owner is.
But being in the butter to it, we're going to be majorly impacted and it will totally destroy the life that we've had for the last 40-something years.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. Precinct 4. I am a second generation in Wareham, and I actually have third generation in the back. What I want to weigh in is I really appreciate your pros and cons on the whole thing. You hit the nail right on the head and the first speaker. I mean, I couldn't do any better than that. I just wanted to weigh in on the fact that we're trying to meet the, the 40B quota. And I think in the past few years, we have been doing a fine job, and the first speaker has touched on that excellent. Where we're getting the pressure from, whether it's developers or whether the state, I don't know, but I deeply encourage you that we pull back on the reins and slow down whoever's the pressuring us to get in it because I don't have numbers in front of me, but I think we're doing a fine job compared to surrounding towns as far as meeting the quota for our, our 40B. So if we can just take this development and say, hey, we need to slow, I'm encouraging you to say, let's just slow down right here, all of a sudden, and let's let the other towns catch up to us, because I think we've done a fine job in the past few years of supplying 40B for this town.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to ask kind of a stupid question, I guess. Is there anybody here in favor of this project?
Only the developer people.
Well, they're not here, so, uh, let's at least take a couple more. The gentleman, uh, has the paper. And then I'll get to the fire back.
To make this quick. My name is Steve Dwar. I live on Winona Road and I see us being very impacted by this. As a member of Indian Heights Association, we had a cleanup on Earth Day. We took about 25 bags of trash off Red Brook Road. And I want to tell you right now, the last thing we need is more nip bottles on Red Brook Road. We know that, okay? Fireball was the number one.
Fireball's number one.
Number one, okay. Does anybody have figures here that would tell us how many units Wareham needs to meet our, to meet the 40B requirement?
I know that this, if, if this went through, it would add roughly 2% to what we have right now, which is 7.7. It would get us pretty close to the 10% number. But again, the state can override that number by citing to the regional need and say, gee, that's nice if you Wareham, but Middle Borough, Carver, Marion, Matipoiset, they're not even close, so the region needs you to keep accepting these. That's the problem with 40B as it's written.
Well, they can, but they won't necessarily do that.
Well, but you can't count on them that they won't.
Can I just make one here?
Yep.
The town of Wareham for the past two years has passed a home rule petition to have the mobile home parks counted as affordable housing. The first time it was...
Still.
...lost in space. It is now, again, not under consideration. And if we even counted 50% of the mobile homes in this town, there are 1,170, we would be at the 10% plus. So we have been actively trying, along with the community, to have what clearly are affordable houses, the, the mobile home homes, counted, and we have met with enormous resistance.
Is there any explanation about the breakdown in one, two, and three-bedroom units? Which ones will be affordable?
I, they're probably in the plans. Uh, I would suggest that if, if you want to see that level of detail, that they would, that would be before the ZBA, when they hold their hearing.
Is that when we're supposed to learn the details of this project?
That, that's when they will present.
And that's Wednesday night? That's tomorrow, next week?
Yes, I, actually, could we, Derek, could you check the agenda on that just to make sure that, because I don't want to steer people to that and find out it's not part of their meeting tomorrow night. We'll check on that. I do know that the majority, the majority are two-bedroom, there are quite a few three bedrooms. I forget the actual breakdown.
Well, that's all I have. I just would like you to do anything you can to get in the way of this project.
Thank you. I believe there was a lady in the back who wished to speak? Come up, please.
My name's Lisa Irish, 97 Marion Road. I think I'm Precinct 4 or 5. I, I think the last gentleman asked all the questions that I had. They were more procedural questions. I definitely support all the residents that spoke before me. But I was just wondering in a straightforward kind of way if you could tell me, is it the number of units or number of beds, number of people? What's this magic 10% number?
Number of units.
Okay.
Number of housing units. So one three-bedroom apartment counts the same as one one-bedroom apartment.
Okay. So I guess we have a number, so is it just these projects that the first speaker talked about that count as the units, or is it also these summer houses that take Section 8?
No. An affordable unit, just so people understand, it carries with it a deed restriction, which sets a limit on the price for which it can be sold, in the case of an affordable house. In the case of affordable rental properties, there are restrictions on the amount of rent that can be charged. And those restrictions last for 30 years. So in order for somebody to commit to this, typically, they do it as a mixed development. That's what we've seen with some of them. They sell some as market rate, where they can charge full price for rents. They, they do some at the reduced rate where they can get, get the reduced rate in. In the case of a project like this, not only are they seeking approval from the zoning board of appeals for the permit, they also have significant grant applications with the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And without those grants, I question whether they will have the money to be able to do this.
Okay. So a lot rides on this letter that you're sending?
Well, some does. A lot ri, ultimately, the decision will be whether to fund these grants or not by the Department of Housing and Community Development. To the extent that our letter has any influence, I guess that would be a good thing.
And I guess kind of along with that, do you have a feeling or a commitment from the superintendent, school committee, police, fire, Toby, on if they would give you any supporting statements in such a letter? I don't know if it would help.
Yeah, I don't know that we've had the time to make that outreach.
Okay.
As, as with my, my earlier laundry list and also with what Mrs. Dodson said earlier, you know, we're well aware of the impacts upon these departments and the town and the other resources.
I think that's all. Oh, and at what point could, so if it, it did go through whichever phase, at what point could we then put stipulations or conditions on? So no pool, yes pool, senior housing, no senior housing, 50 units versus 174? At what point?
That's, that would all take place during the zoning board of appeals hearings.
So...
They're the permitting authority. We're, we're, we're just in here to, to send a letter to the Department of Housing and Community Development. That's really our sole role on this.
Okay.
I mean, if other people want to listen to us, that's great.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Right, and sometimes those things, yeah, and sometimes those things do get, get negotiated. A developer very often will go before the permitting authority, which here is the zoning board of appeals, and they'll go in with a proposal, and they'll have X amount of units, and they'll come out with this amount of units. And sometimes they, they do achieve a negotiated solution that results in a lesser impact upon the town and its resources.
Okay.
But you can't guarantee that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have the dates, Derek?
It's not on their agenda for tomorrow and the...
Can't be, because anybody who's in the butter would have to be notified.
Right, so it's, and you wouldn't know future dates because they're not posted on the agenda. You've asked, it looks like it's 32 one-bedrooms, 122 two-bed, two-bath, and 23-bedroom, two-bath.
It doesn't say how much of each is going to be low and how much of each is going to be market.
No.
Well, none are going to be market. There are 40% that would be workforce, which is, you know, what we call, you know...
Oh, so that's my, oh, okay.
No. They're all subsidized to some extent.
Right, they're, the calling of market is not necessarily market, it's still workforce housing, which can be lower.
Right.
Can I ask if so, if calls into Hyden or Housing or whatever, and, and our representatives would be helpful?
This, these, these, these matters don't get handled at the federal level. It's solely within state, so that wouldn't...
Rets. Can we call state reps? Would that be helpful?
Certainly.
Maybe.
I, I have spoken to...
Actually, if people are going to speak, they need to come up so that everybody out there watching on TV can hear.
Hello again.
Thanks.
I have called and have spoken to a Mark who works for Susan Gifford, and we had a conversation about this matter a couple of different times, actually. And he stressed that to maybe help about approving the fight about the mobile homes being accepted is to just call and call and call. Pachettos, I guess, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing his name right.
Pacico, Mark Pacico.
Just bomb them with calls. And, and so that would be one avenue. I'm a fighter, I'm not a quitter. I would love suggestions. I would love to get a committee together, and I want to propose that us citizens in Wareham, we need to start a watchdog community and just be watchful, read the papers of where, those little articles in the newspaper. We need to start reading each and every single thing. We need to be more, myself included, come to the selectmen meetings and the zoning board meetings so that something doesn't slip by that we don't see. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I have one more.
Uh, woman in the ba, well, you come up first, then, then you can come up, yes.
I'm just curious because I, if I heard the correct information, it's eight acres? And would that not abut the Lyman Reserve?
No, it doesn't.
Somehow?
It does not.
It does not? Okay, thank you.
If it's all affordable housing, who maintains these buildings? You know, the roof has to be replaced in 10 or 15 years.
Hey.
Where is the X?
They hire a company, like they do some of the others that are out there.
Like Brandywine?
They hire an independent company, could be Self-Show Housing, one of the different groups, they actually hire someone to maintain it.
In this instance, they've said that they will keep it, they will maintain control for 15 years. But that is something that they would have to, in order to make sure that happens, that would have to be a covenant in the permit, which I assume the zoning board of appeals would, would require. If they said that, the ZBA would put that in as a condition of the permit, if they granted the permit.
15 years is nothing.
No, it's not.
I mean, that's
Nope.
That's one roof.
Maybe.
Maybe, right.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's a thought to, like, who's going to be maintaining it? Who's going to be?
That's all part of the process, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Gentlemen in the back.
My property is this particular name. Will I get a notice from the zoning board?
You have to.
Yes.
If they, if they were to do something and not notify you, you could basically go to the state and get the project stopped.
The question was, if you're in a butter, will you be notified?
Says yes.
No, she's out, nobody can hear it.
Nobody can hear her.
Oh, sorry.
Shouldn't engage until people come up.
What constitutes in a butter?
The question is, what constitutes in a butter? And how many feet? So, it's somebody that butts the property.
100 feet.
Either across the street or on the border.
It's within 300 feet.
Folks, we're going to ask everybody to come up to speak. I'm sorry, I don't want to parrot every five seconds.
Yeah.
Hi, Billy. Gentlemen, ladies, my name's William Alwood, and I'm on 55 Shawn Circle. I own the Cramery Boggs behind Benny's. I just have lived in this town all my life, and what I've seen, and I know a lot, I was on the fire department a long time ago, I know a lot of the police officers, and I'm still in touch with a lot of them. And the thing I see with 40B housing is a lot of drug activity. It seems to come with it somehow, but I know that the police officers go to, say, Union Pond once, twice a day. I know it's getting out of hand in a lot of places, and this opioid thing. On my property, I walked around into the water department, and we've picked up bucket loads of needles.
Yep.
And we also have a methadone clinic next door.
Right.
And the only thing I see good about this thing going up is, the taxpayers won't have to pay for the people to get to the methadone clinic by taxi, they can walk.
Walked in.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we've got a pretty good flavor of what you people are looking for here. So, we will move to the agenda item, and what I will do is run down the list. I've added a couple of things that you folks have given us as well. And what I'm going to do is ask for a motion and a vote to approve each one, and then I'll include it in the letter.
Can I make a couple comments?
Yeah, go ahead.
I spent a lot of time with the planning board, et cetera, some of my particular pieces here. The way the state operates, it's really, our hands are almost tied. The way they put 40B together, it's basically done with the builders and developers. We don't have a lot of say. The 40B projects are streamlined, and they bypass a lot of our regulations. I know we had a project, it was a Section 8, that went in a particular area of town, it was put in before we even had a chance to say anything. It almost destroyed a whole neighborhood of about 35 new homes. And I was told directly that if I try and interfere, you may go to jail. And this is back about five, six years ago. It, it doesn't work easily for us. But the one thing we have here, which I think gives us the most leverage of all, is with the DHCD, they want to see the town supporting and have some money into the project to show they want it. If we basically come back and say no, it affects whether or not the particular builder or person looking for the grants will even get anything. So, if we come back and say no, that puts a real, real monkey wrench in the whole operation. That's the best that we can do, just so you understand. It's not that we want it or don't want it, the simple fact is that we don't have, we don't have the ability to say no directly, because it's not in our hands, they took it out of our hands.
We being the town, not the selectmen, not the zoning board of appeal, the town.
See, 40B, what it does is it bypasses certain of the regulations as far as building a project, and it streamlines the following to do it. And they're supposed to make only 20% profit margin when they do these projects, but there's a lot of things internally that go on. Myself and Mrs. Whiteside have probably spent the last three, four years going up to the state house, writing the warrant articles to get past the town meeting. We have 1,100 mobile home units in Wareham. Carver next door to us has 900. That represents almost 20% of all the mobile homes in Massachusetts. Those numbers would basically put us over the top, no matter what. The problem you have is that we basically have gone back and forth with Susan Gifford. She tries every year with an article, it doesn't go anywhere. The bottom line is, you have to be honest, she's a Republican. This is a Democratic state. You haven't got a chance of getting anything done, it's Republican. You have to be realistic. Senator Pacico obviously is basically a Democrat at a fairly high level. He's been working, at least with us recently, for a 50% count, which would still give us the number you need. Any 40B project that goes into a town, gives you a one- or two-year moratorium for any other project to come in again. But that still doesn't help us in this particular case. Our numbers, I think, are down below 7% actually, because we've been losing a few, because people will go ahead, we had a couple instances where people were in, basically, income-restricted houses, affordable, and they said they couldn't sell them, and DHCD doesn't really help us at all. And after so much timeframe, they'll let them sell it back at market rate and take the restriction off. So, it's, this is something that's so broken, it's ridiculous. I had discussions today up at the state house about 40B and what we're going to do with it, with the MMA and stuff, because it's a broken system. It's not fair to us, it's not fair to you. But my suggestion is that we basically, you know, write a letter saying that we're not going to put any, any skin in the game, and it may have more of effect than anything else. Because everything ends up being dollars today.
Tony, is there anything you'd like to say? Judy?
I just want to say thank you to the people who came out tonight. The first woman who spoke, I think, covered most of what we had here, but it's encouraging to see that you are not going to roll over and play dead. It's really, really good.
Thank you. Okay, I'll proceed with the laundry list here. Are we concerned about the size of the project and the history in town with large projects of this nature?
Yes.
Okay. Are we concerned that the build-out of 174 units within two or three years is too much too fast?
Yes.
Okay. Are we concerned that despite resident preferences, there are no guarantees that units won't be filled by non-residents?
Yes.
On this particular case here, the way things are done, you have to qualify income level. We've gone through this before. We have a couple of projects in town, Union Pond is one of them, where probably, I'm going to use a figure that may be a little bit off, 60% to 70% of the Wareham residents that applied couldn't qualify to get in, because their income levels were higher than what was required. So, when they say you're going to have local residents in there, it's a misnomer.
They can offer it, but we don't have enough people who qualify. And one of the issues we do have in town is that our housing is so cheap, we are already affordable, we don't need to build more for our own. The workforce housing component is not a majority of the units, so are we concerned about that?
Yes.
Are we concerned about the significant financial impact of several hundred new residents upon schools, police, emergency medical services, sewer capacity, and the fire districts?
Yes.
Are we concerned that the location is too near a congested intersection and existing neighborhoods?
Yes.
Yes, and I know, and also, just so you know, where I work with DOT 5 and the transportation tip program, that when we did the layout for up to Red Brook Road and stuff, that was never taken into effect at all.
Right.
There's no provision there for any large amount of traffic moving in and out of there.
Okay. Well, again, I will be copying the pet of District 5 on this. Are we concerned that we already have housing in Wareham that's affordable and don't need that much more?
Yes.
Are we concerned that we're not receiving adequate recognition? I guess you could say that we're much closer to our 10% affordable quota than most other local communities?
Yes.
Are we concerned that if we meet the 10% affordable housing quota, we may still be required to accept additional 40B projects due to the regional percentage numbers?
Yep. Yes.
I know. Do we believe that jobs need to be made available before we provide housing? Otherwise, any residents will find it difficult to break the cycle of poverty?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Are we concerned that many people in town already face significant socioeconomic challenges, and we are ill-equipped to receive more people with these issues?
Yes.
We don't get enough funding from the state to handle any of it.
Are we concerned that the people typically from the cities who are drawn here will find fewer support services than they were used to receiving in the cities?
Yes.
Are we concerned that the infrastructure in the area was built to handle summer occupancy, and, which has already turned into year-round occupancy, and would be even more overburdened with a project of this size?
Yes.
Okay. And are we concerned that the abutters have legitimate concerns about the impacts of this property upon their existing properties and where they live?
Yes.
I think that about covers it.
Can we hammer on the traffic?
Well, the traffic factors into the intersection, I think, so I'll add that to that point.
But I think Mr. Slavin said that it goes to Red Brook, it doesn't
The original project for Route 6 and 28, if everybody remembers, because this has been going on for a long time, was supposed to go, at one point, actually, farther back with the road split. They actually talked about taking the split and eliminating it, so the roads came together way that far back, going all the way down to the new bridge that was just done at the end by Buzz's Bay there. What happened was, they kept pushing this off, and it just didn't move anywhere for years, really. And the project was about, maybe five years ago, six years ago, maybe $11 million to go basically from the stop-and-shop area down to the bridge. Well, because they pushed it off another two or three years, the project now, as of a couple weeks ago when it got approved, is 19.1 and 19.2 million, only to Red Brook Road.
Only to Red Brook Road.
The other piece, which is just as long, is not even on the books up until 2022, there's nothing in sight for that length of time, at least.
Just double-check there, it looks like in the plan, there's a light being installed.
There's a light there, because there has to be a turnaround there. But it's still going to be a problem, because it doesn't take into effect that particular volume of traffic there.
Right, right at that point.
Right, I want to make sure that we acknowledge the light, so they don't think that that's going to solve the problem.
No, absolutely not.
Right, it isn't.
Yes, so
Because lights, the existing light design was not done with knowledge of this project.
So, can I, just to clarify, please? So, from
Could you come up to the microphones? Thanks.
So, can you, are we going to add that paper? So, from the stop-and-shop area, or from the split?
From, from where the split comes together?
Yes.
Which is just before the stop-and-shop.
Okay.
From there, all the way down to Red Brook Road, the road gets widened, and most people don't realize that the state owns approximately, I think it's another additional 20 feet on both sides of the road.
Okay.
So, there's, there's over 300 takings and easements that have to be done on this project as well. That's why it's slow. And they're doing it right now, everybody's being informed. So, there's certain businesses, which is, doesn't have any relevance to everybody here, but some businesses may lose their entrance ways.
Yes.
They may have their entrance right on the highway.
Yes.
They may have a sign that's on the highway right now.
Parking.
Parking, et cetera, so it's affecting everybody. But you're going to have a bike lane, and you're going to have your two lanes of traffic, you're going to have a four-inch-high berm that separates the two, because the biggest problem we have is people cross the streets from the mobile home parks, et cetera, they go across to the liquor store, or McDonald's, or Wendy's, and once every year, so someone doesn't make it across.
So, then it's going to bottleneck at Redneck, I mean, at Red Brook?
It's going to come back into the old road, just after Red Brook, the intersection there.
Which means you could cross over from one side to the other with no, no restriction. Technically, you're supposed to cross the double O line.
But is it also going to be, it's going to go thinner, because the bike lane is going to be gone, so it's kind of going to
It's going to go back to where it is now.
Okay.
It'll stay where it is.
Stay where it is.
It won't, it won't affect
Yeah, final Lindsay's, it'll be the same, for example.
It won't affect the traffic, because the two lanes will still match up with the two lanes each side, you just, the bike lane stops.
But if someone's riding a bike, so they're not going to have anywhere to ride it, so it's
They're going to be in the road.
Yeah, they're going to get run over.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Yeah.
When you're doing your list there, one thought would be to include a concern, maybe do some investigation about this development company. Because I didn't read the article, but like I said, one of the people that I was having a conversation with about this matter stated that they have changed their name three times in 15 years. I've been in business, just to let you know, since, when was I starting? 1991. And since then, I've been self-employed all these many years, and I still have the same company name, because I have nothing to hide. That's a red flag to me about this development. Thank you.
Just to make a point, these are things that you, as individuals, when you go before the ZBA, these are the points you have to bring out. The ZBA is the one that sets the conditions, et cetera, if they decide to accept the project or not. So, these are things you have to sit there and do some homework and present it to them. They will listen to you. The more of you show up, the more effect you have. If you don't show up at all, then, you know, it doesn't matter what we say, they, they have to follow the rules.
But again, your, your documentation of what you're saying, the, the ability to hand in a piece of paper with your facts and figures on it will be at least looked at and be part of the record.
I think the problem that everybody's having here is, even yourselves don't know when the zoning board is going to hear our, this, this project.
They haven't come before them yet, that's why. They haven't applied yet.
Yeah.
Again, I go back to the Curry, last week, having an article saying they were going to have a hearing this week.
I think they meant the board of selectmen would be bringing it up at this meeting.
Yeah, and actually, this isn't a hearing, believe it or not, although it's kind of turned into one.
It's a pretty good one, actually.
We need to think tomorrow night, by surprise, if we don't go to that meeting.
No.
No, we have a gentleman here who's just stated he was a direct abutter, and if he didn't receive a notice, and they went ahead with the meeting, it would, he could challenge the sufficiency of the notice, and there would be no action, it would be lawful taken there.
They came before the board to just present what they want to do, because they were looking for support from the board in order to go back to DHCD to say that the town is supporting the project. They haven't gone the next step past that.
The board being this board. They haven't approached
Right.
Or applied to any other board, and they've only asked us for a letter of support.
They may have, for all I know, they may have applied, but they have not yet received their notifications back, and they haven't announced the hearing yet. The hearings have to be announced in the paper as well.
How long's the notice?
14 days.
14 days for the zoning board of appeals.
And folks, one of the things, the project update for this is going to be posted on the town's website. I urge you, if you want notifications, we do it electronically. Please go to the town's website, register, and you'll receive these agenda packets and such. It's a great way to get the information.
Yeah. Tony Bowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just thought maybe it would be useful for you to hear what the process is. Where it's at right now is that the developer has submitted to the state what is known as a project eligibility letter application. the state what is known as a project eligibility letter application. And that goes into mass housing, DHCD, and it's part of a package that they require to see whether they're going to put some money into this project. One, as part of the project eligibility letter application process, the state regulations, which you can find at 760 Code of Mass Regulations, Section 56, 760 CMR 56, it says that as part of the subsidizing agency's review of the project eligibility letter application, the Board of Selectmen is given the opportunity to provide what is known as a 30-day comment letter. And what the Board of Selectmen here has done is basically held a public hearing, although it's not required to do so by the regulations. The board wanted to have your input before a letter went in. We are now in what is known as the 30-day comment letter period. The Board of Selectmen will put together that letter, and it will send it into what is called the subsidizing agency, the state. We'll just call it the state. And then the state will consider those comments in view of the regulations and determine whether to issue a project eligibility letter. It is actually the project eligibility letter, which is a document that's approved by the state, that allows the developer to then move forward to the Zoning Board of Appeals and to begin the application process with the Zoning Board of Appeals. So there could not be a Zoning Board of Appeals hearing to consider this project until this 30-day comment letter period is done and until the state has reviewed the project eligibility letter application. So in terms of concerns about ZBA hearings tomorrow or ZBA hearings next week, can't happen. There, no, there's a, sorry, just let me finish, it'll help. So there's a definite sequence of events that has to happen before there can be ZBA hearings. These are early days. This is the 30-day comment period. If and when the state, and I think realistically, I think we have to say when the state issues a project eligibility letter, because they always do, at that point, the ZBA hearings will commence. But we're not there yet. So, thank you. I just wanted to make clear what the sequence was for everybody. And I know that lady did want to ask a question, but it's not my place.
Come on up, please.
Well, it's just the 30 days. Where are we in the 30-day?
We're actually, we're at the end, but we received an extension on it because they submitted the letter before informing the Board of Selectmen as well. That's why I met with them at that point, informed them they needed to come. The state.
So the state received a letter first?
Correct.
But we didn't receive it at the same time.
Right. So they applied to the state, the state notified us that they applied, and we are now within the comment period. And that's what the Board of Selectmen is going to do, is send the comments up.
And when does that comment period end?
It would be, I think, we're almost done. That's why we're having this meeting.
Yeah.
You're within days.
The letter will be going out tomorrow.
Yeah.
Late tonight.
For our reference, so we know when to expect the next step from them, when does the comment letter appear?
We're essentially done. I would say immediately.
So it's over, this is it. Okay.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman, and I'm sorry, I didn't have the power to recognize people. The next thing that you would be watching for would be something out of DHCD or mass housing where they approve or deny, and I, to be completely realistic, I think you have to look at approve, a project eligibility letter. And that's, that's the next thing to keep your eye on, because it's the issuance of that PEL that will actually be the trigger for zoning board hearings, public hearings, notice to abutters. Obviously, Derek's making sure that this information gets up on the town website, so...
Is that how we would know, when that thing is issued, when the approval or denial is issued, from the DHCD or the mass housing? How would we know if that's issued?
As soon as the town receives it, we will post it on the town website as a notification, which should give it out to the community. You seem to have a good networking group, so I'm assuming somebody's going to be, they'll be registered and keep an eye on it as well. Because the meetings obviously are once a week, but if we get it on a Wednesday, you wouldn't hear at an open Selectmen's meeting until the following Tuesday, so that's why we'd send it out online is the best way.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, I think...
Are we going to just bulk up that traffic one?
Yep, yep, well set with that.
Okay.
Red Brook Road redesigned, intersection does not accommodate.
Even though, even...
There's no coming through new anticipated traffic.
Yeah, even though it has the stoplight or whatever.
The road probably will have issues because water was expanding again.
Make a motion to authorize Mr. Titlebaum to write a letter to the individuals or bodies that he had named previously with all of the points that we have said yes to.
Second.
Okay, motion to authorize the letter by Selectman Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti, was it?
Yep.
Was it you? Okay, flip a coin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400. I'd like to thank everybody who sat through the meeting tonight, even with the air conditioning, it's a little toasty in here. Like the town, a lot of the town infrastructure, it's old and struggles to keep up. And thank you all for your comments. Please stay on top of this. Your voices can be heard, everybody's loudly as ours, and we appreciate the time and thought that you've put into this tonight. Give yourselves a round of applause, please. And let's see, we'll get back to the regular agenda. We've got appointments, Board of Health.
Yep.
Okay. Yep, absolutely. Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen...
Well, why don't we take a break for a minute, everybody?
Five-minute break? Two-minute break?
21 is five.
Five-minute break.
Just a comment for everybody. If you, if you, if your people have issues on this, just you can contact us at any time, you know.
Right.
We're available, you know, one way or the other, through town or through email or through phone on the website, so...
Yeah, you people produce yourself, use us.
A lot of times, the information out there really is not what it really is. I'd be more than happy to tell you exactly what it is. Because that article was very misleading, as if this was a done deal and a project all done. This is, this is just the tip of the iceberg.
Concerns that are very concerning, that it's going ahead without any, any, any kind of input from the community, which is really...
Absolutely not.
So many of us, I think, have seen it happen elsewhere or a prior story, so, yeah, it's scary, very scary.
We got burned once, it's not going to happen again.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
We'll go down fighting if we go down.
You can't do that.
We're just taking a quick break to let the room clear and...
And that's it.
Catch our breath.
Frank can send the girl into the courier. Okay.
All set?
Yep. Going to make a...
Oh, it hasn't been five minutes.
That's close enough.
It's close enough, government work.
Okay, all set, Rich? Yeah, we're just doing reappointments, we don't need you for this. Yeah. Thank you.
Oh my God, wonderful.
Okay, I guess we'll jump back. Appointments, Board of Health, who's up?
Okay, we have an associate member, Thomas L. Gleason, 15 Maritime Drive. The undersigned Selectman of Wareham had this day appointed you as an associate member to the Board of Health to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Motion to appoint by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
Okay, next, I have on road commissioners, William Heaney, 7 Madison Street, Wareham. The undersigned Selectman of Wareham had this day appointed you as a member to the Board of Road Conditions to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Okay, motion to reappoint by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
Okay, again, to the road commissioners, Howard A. Smith, 1 Old Platt Road, West Wareham. The undersigned Selectman of Wareham had this day appointed you as a member to the Board of Road Commissioners to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Okay, motion to appoint by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
Okay, cemetery commissioners, Deborah Jean Rose, 10 Jupiter Street, Wareham. The undersigned Selectman of Wareham had this day appointed you as a member to the Cemetery Commissioners to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, motion to reappoint by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
Okay. Drew, you do this one. First one, I'll do the second one.
Motion to appoint Sandra Slavin to the Community Preservation Committee as the Community Conservation Commission representative to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020. Second.
Motion by Selectman Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Abstained.
Okay, vote is 301. Clerk Slavin abstaining.
Okay, next, again, for CPC, Sherby Warbin, 39 Green Gate Lane. The undersigned Selectman of Wareham had this day appointed you as a member to the Community Preservation Committee to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Motion to reappoint by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
Okay, next I have historical commission.
All right.
First one up on the historical commission, Pam Foley, 3 Main Street, Unit 218. The undersigned Selectman of Wareham had this day appointed you as a member to the Historical Commission to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, motion to reappoint by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
Next, Barbara A. Smith, 6 Prospect Ave., Wareham, Mass. The undersigned Selectman of Wareham had this day appointed you as a member to the Historical Commission to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
Okay, next will be the Veterans Council. Joseph A. Sinelli, 11 Long Metal Drive, Wareham. The undersigned Selectman of Wareham had this day appointed you as a member to the Veterans Council to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
James Crocker, 56 White Moss Drive, Marston Mills, Mass.
What?
He's a service officer, that's fine. The undersigned Selectman of Wareham had this day appointed you as a member to the Veterans Council as a veteran service officer to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Motion to reappoint by Selectman Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
You already have the donation of the chair.
Yeah, we took care of that. On the agenda, we took care of everything except request to place signs on town property.
And you've got, and you've got the lottery ticket bill. You're going to write the...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're all set with that. We already took care of that.
Making a note in the folder here for it. And requests for signs.
Do you have any?
Wareham Gaetman, O Box 287, Wareham, Mass. Linda McKeonan, 20 Christopher Drive, Wareham. Wareham Gaetman Baseball, game tonight, Spillane Field. 22 home games plus five playoff games. Front of Town Hall, Route 6, two hours before game time until the end of game time, taken down after every game. That's it.
They also, you should put on there that they're going to want signs for the All-Star Game, because that's huge. It's not on there, so, but I would add it on and I would add it into the motion.
So done.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve signs by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400. Any other requests, or is that it?
That's it.
That's all I got, Peter.
Okay, does anybody have any 48-hour business? Selectman Scasiotti?
Nope.
Selectman Whiteside? Clerk Slavin?
How funny, you know.
I don't have any either. Town administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The energy aggregation, that is still going on, folks. We did, they did request additional information today about any information during the public period, as well as the English basically has a second language in the community. Those are requests from the Department of Public Utilities. So it looks like we're into the nitty-gritty. Hopefully, that will get done someday.
Yeah, I was with him all day today. He's pulling his hair out. He has not much left.
His email was grumpier than mine, the return, so...
Oh, he was not happy, I can tell you right now.
The, this is a reminder, we come back in the summertime, we have new residents, we have new renters, we have, we have new visitors. Where the town of Wareham is a carry-in, carry-out trash policy for our beaches and parks. Just an update, we are looking for the business districts such as Main Street and within the Village of Onset itself. We're going for the Big Belly Solar Trash Compactors, you know, roughly about eight to 10 altogether, depending on funding for them. We have some pledges from local companies, as well as a, a, well, I won't talk about that one, I can't, I can't really speak about it yet. So I appreciate all their help. The thought behind those is helping the businesses and such. That's where some of the trash is generated. However, carry-in, carry-out trash policy, also another form of it more extreme is leave no trace. These are well-founded. These are part of all, almost all state, state parks and such. It's all throughout the country. So this is, contrary to popular belief, this is not a Wareham phenomenon. This is a well-established practice. I sent in two applications, which I'll request beyond the Selectmen's agenda and the Finance Committee agenda to the Community Preservation Committee. One is for $120,000 for the repair slash replacement of the rubber roof over the Town Hall Auditorium. As you know, we just got through the project of the slate roof. Good news is we'll be returning more money from that project than what we'll be requesting for the rubber roof. This sounds contrary. Unfortunately, due to the way the town meeting articles were voted, we can't use that money until it's voted specifically for the rubber roof. So that's some of the nuances we have to go through. Also, the, you've been hearing updates from the Dog Park Committee, and the reality is, I've applied for $20,000 for the Community Preservation Committee on their behalf since it's town property, but really, all the work goes to them. They are applying to the Stanton Foundation for $200,000, and the community match is 10%. So I think $20,000 from community preservation funds for a dog park is not too much to ask. So I thought that I'd bring that forward and looking forward to some of their information. They've done a lot of work, and like, like many projects, I think they got beyond the 200K mark and had to, had to bring that back in for a little bit. So I, the, I really appreciate all their hard work in the project.
200,000, 220,000. Pretty close.
Just an update, the, on June 21st, which is Thursday, and Monday, June 26th, the assessing office will be run out of Room 27 of the Town Hall. We had an employee that a few years ago retired after, I think, almost 40 years at the town. She had not remembered when they replaced the rug in there. They hadn't during her tenure, so they will actually be replacing the rug. We had our insurance company came down and notified us of not just a tripping risk, but an actual environmental hazard. So that is, that is being taken care of. And in the meantime, I know they probably wish I would send them home. We will be having them operate out of another room. So, thank you for your time.
Okay, liaison initiative reports. Selectman Scasiotti? Selectman Whiteside? Clerk Slavin?
Yep. Last night, planning board met. They have scheduled in the Bay Point for two weeks from yesterday. There is discussion there. There's another project moving along, and there's two other projects in the actual build stage. One's on Charlotte Furnace Road, and I forget where the other one is right now, but we have things moving. Wareham Marketplace is moving along as well. It looks like they have the pad and pieces for all these, and I think Autozone, I think, is going there also, as of right now. So there's two there. And that should be, the other project there is what they've got here, and the Fort Fairfield should be June 26th approval there. My trip up north today, I sent Derek a list of different projects that were coming down the line for grants. I believe there's one, I gave you, Derek, on the Capitol. Capitol District, once he gets done with the town council.
Just say yes.
I sent you a note about, I think, the Capitol District program they have, where you can take an area town, and if you add, again, if you wanted to do trash, do anything, you could make an, you could make an actual area where businesses could get involved and set up a capital improvement program.
Interestingly, I think, though, the onset fire districts are already set up for that and could do it on, that was one they're establishing, so...
I'm just saying, that's one idea, but you can also do it in all parts of Wareham. It has some interesting, you know, pieces to it. They have quite a bit of money put aside for it on the new capital plan.
Is it like the alcohol districts, where you can declare the district, and as long as this on file in the clerk's office, it's hunky-dory?
You could probably try. I'm not shaking away with it. The CPC will need to be a little careful. They're expecting the matching to only be 15% for next year, but they also have a bill in place right now that they want to raise the fees at the Registry of Deeds to help refund it back, so they could bring it back up to the 35%, 40% usual match. Whether that's going to pass or not, I don't know. I was expecting really bad news about the budget for May, because they already had April's semi-disaster at $456 million shortfall for benchmark. semi-disaster at $456 million shortfall for benchmark. May actually was $30 million over benchmark, so they're only short about $430 million right now, depending what happens in June.
Oh, that's just such a great improvement.
Well, it is, really, it's less than 1% of the total budget, so it's not so bad. So we'll see what happens. Maybe not. We talked today about it, there may not be any cuts. 2018, it's something we're gonna have to watch carefully, because there might be cuts there. The biggest problem is the concern at the federal level with the healthcare plans and stuff. It could cost Massachusetts somewhere between $750,000 to $1,000,000. If the federal government goes through what, you know, the current president's suggesting, that amount of money lost to the state would adversely affect all the other different programs and budgets. So that's something that's sitting on the horizon that we have no control over, and neither does the state right now, so it's sitting there with a, you know, an elephant sitting on top of your head, wondering what's gonna happen. State most likely will not have their, their budgets between the House, Senate, and the governor done until probably mid-July. Federal government will lucky if we get that by November for theirs, so it's pretty hard to run a business this way. And whatever I gave Derek, he can bring it back up later on, it's rather different things happening, there's, there's support and a lot of things asking for. We'll all have our fingers crossed as far as what happens with the budget for 2017, 2018. That's about it.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to interrupt, the one thing I had a note for was, we did receive a little bit ago, a notification from Mr. Kluber from the, from the onset fire district about, about, I guess, like, the property in front of Hammond School. I told them no before, so I, I don't know what's, has anything changed?
Unless you figure something out.
Okay, so I will, I will respond, I appreciate, you know, him writing the letter and formally requesting, and I'll draft a response in the negative.
Please.
Yeah, I would, I, as I understand it, they're looking to swap parcels, but I don't know why we'd, we would take over essentially what is a 60-plus-year-old garage operation with all the issues that would be associated with that, even if we wanted to trade the land, I'd, I, you know, I'm already dealing with Tremontale, I don't want to deal with another one.
And land swaps are illegal by.
Yeah, by law.
Yeah, so.
Even if it were illegal.
The problem is, you're gonna have to go back and, you know, look at the 1916 decree and all the other stuff that goes with it.
Well, the other thing is too, is that parcel associated with the school is limited to educational purposes, I mean, this is just, they've gotta figure out their own place to put their firehouse.
Yeah, that was educational, and then the other parcels there were specifically taken for recreation. We have recreation plans, I understand that there's, public safety is paramount, however, you know, there, there needs to be some sort of different planning on it.
Yeah.
Pull some property in front of the existing stuff, rip it all down.
Okay, we don't have any bills or anything. We do have one set of executive session minutes.
Move to approve, as presented.
We do?
Oh, we.
And hold.
Yeah, don't you have something there?
They're in there. They're, they were on the.
Your motion was to approve and hold, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second.
See if we have them.
They were on the.
I know, they were, they were on the email.
Yeah. We can do it, and.
Yeah, we can, we can vote to a, we can vote to a.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400. Okay, I guess it's that time.
Motion to adjourn.
Good night, Wareham.
Motion to adjourn by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400. Thank you very much, good night, Wareham.